You ready in there, Matt? No, I meant in there.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I have to be clear on that, so apologize for that. Just a couple of introductory comments. Obviously, the budget process is a key opportunity for the external community, our residents and citizens, to participate in town government. Lots of chatter this weekend in a number of different sources. It is, it's, some of it was interesting in terms of, A, first and foremost, I think it's great that people are actually looking at things. As is anything, it provides us with an opportunity to provide clarity as we go forward. Different interpretations are, we're flush with money and are sitting and waiting on what to do. We have ample capacity, we have seed money, and it was taken to doing a survey with people. The interesting thing is the survey shed no, absolutely no new light from the survey of two years ago. Public transportation, public transportation and congestion, maintain what you have in parks and recreation facilities. Others had, do not see a focus on mission and goals and others were questioning what we, what we're going to accomplish as a town. And all that to say, it gives us a great opportunity to, to really look at how we finalize the document, the process, and how we use it as both, not just a financial tool, but an operational communication and policy tool as well. So with that, we have two, two department discussions today. We had planning first, and I guess, Matt, you are going to take it. But Jeff, you're going to come up and see it, aren't you? Okay. All right. Good.
Morning, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity today. And it's, it's been now two weeks, and it's, so far, it's been a great, great experience. I'm really, really looking forward to the future here with the town of Waxaw. And first, what I thought I might do is to share some of my initial department goals that I have. And I thought I might, since it's been a general question of the board for each department head, I might touch a little bit on our training. And then certainly, I've, since I've been here two weeks, I've not been part of the initial preparation of the budget, so I may leave some specific questions for Matt and/or Greg that you may have. But for the goals, provide first-class customer service to our citizens, groups, entities, organizations, and developers that seek our services on a daily basis. Ensure that our ordinance regulations are adhered to in a reasonable and clear manner. Build relationships and work collaboratively with the board, advisory boards, town staff, and our peers, and neighboring communities, and most importantly, our citizens. Advise and provide our decision-makers with the best information possible in order to make sound land use decisions. And last but not least, is build back up our department to full staffing. When I got here, we were a staff of three. We will soon be a staff of four. We just made a hire for our planning technician. She's from Monroe and just finishing up her degree right now, so we look forward to her being here. And we have a couple of more vacancies out there that we hope to fill over, over the summer. As far as travel training, we're, we're no different than any other department. It's imperative to what we do individually, but also think it's important for the organization for our planning and zoning staff to get properly, keep up with the, with the training that's allowed, keep up with the current techniques, things like that, that are in the planning and zoning field. Provides us an opportunity individual to maintain our credentials. That's primarily the AICP, but that's not the, the only one. And with that comes specific law and ethics training, so that's very good to keep up with on a regular basis. Keeps us current in our field. As you well know, the state legislature will adopt new, new statutes that affect planning and zoning type issues, and there's court cases that come along every now and then that make precedent for land use decisions. We have to stay up with that, and that's one of the best ways to do that, and particularly to get good analysis on those particular issues that come up. It allows us, most importantly, I think, though, to, to see what our peers are doing across the state. There's no academic honor code in planning. You know, it's always great to take new, fresh ideas that are out there, what other people are doing, and see how those could be implemented here in Waxaw. And most importantly, though, I think as well, it builds morale for a, for a department, you know, being able to talk, meet new people, build those relationships with your, your peers that last a lifetime. Thank you. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that we may have, you may have.
So, one question, you, in your goals, you said adhered to. What about modernize? UDO, ETJ, I think you brought up the ETJ, and obviously, our various ordinances that support neighborhoods and the like.
I think if that is a goal of the board, then absolutely, yes.
I don't think you'll get any disagreement that this, that is a goal of the board, right? I mean, and an expeditious one. Our, our downtown code is, has been broken, and it's been highlighted for, for a while, and then the combination of all of our development ordinances, I'm sure you experienced this as we've traversed through conditional use to actually modern code, code. It's, it's been a journey. We still have some distressed properties here, staying in the past, but we have to bring it forward. I mean, I, I think there's unanimous agreement on, on that, consensus, I should say, we're not making a decision here. And then the ordinances themselves, the growth management side of it, some things, as happens when you rapidly grow, you, you don't get everything put in place that you might need to because you're trying to stay above water, so.
Yes.
So, that's, that kind of indicates that the honeymoon might be over pretty quick then, right?
Well, that's okay. I'm, I'm up for it, yes.
Good. Good, good. Questions?
You say that you are currently hiring someone coming on, and you'll be a staff of four, and you're still looking to fill other positions. Approximately how many more positions would you need to fill to bring your department up to par, to where you think you need to move forward with the items, you know, the UDO, the, everything else, the ordinances, land use, everything, right now?
As I understand it, we have six total positions in the department, and right now, we have three, with the fourth one coming in, in June. We do have some temporary help as well that comes in, a couple of days a week assistance right now until we're able to fill, fill those roles. Most importantly, to me right now, is just being able to, to get our service levels up, be able to take on the, the daily requests of citizens, developers, and such, to make sure that we're providing that top-notch customer service that we want to provide for the town. I do think that once we're able, hopefully in the next little bit, to get up to that full staffing, then we can not only do that, but then utilize some resources then to look specifically at our codes and, and start to work on, on that more as, as time goes on.
Now, with the six staffing that you will bring up or have on board, and with the projects and things and all the work that has to be done, now, we're looking, well, I know you're new, coming in, but, and you have someone coming on right now that you say that's currently finishing, was it school or something, and then coming on board?
Yes, she's, she's graduating, and she'll be taking on the, the entry-level position in the department.
Okay. So, will we also be looking for people who are more experienced in certain roles? Because, you know, a really big concern right now is that UDO is moving forward with the other, you know, ordinances and things that we have to put in place so that we can move forward as a town and really plan, you know, strategically. So, are, is that our hope or our goal, that we will get those type of people coming on board who have that experience and have that time to devote to those specific areas?
Yes, that's correct. The, the other two positions are senior-level positions, and what, what I would envision those is to be a mix of, of leadership that can, you know, not only work on what we would call the current planning-type functions, which is planning, or zoning, rather, subdivision administration, things like that, but then also be able to focus more on what we call the long-range type of planning or comp planning. And that would include things like being able to, to work more with the code and try to, to update those as we move along.
You, you said improve service levels. What's your perception after two weeks as to where we're, where we need to improve? Penalty-free, we're not being critical here, just kind of, what, what are you seeing?
Well, I, I honestly, I think it's been very good.
Okay.
Very good. And it's, with, with the staff that we have, they are taking on what we have. Matt's done a great, great job of taking that on for a good little while, and, and working on building that, or keeping that going while we work to build, build that up. But it's still very early. I'm still listening and learning quite a bit. I mean, there's, there's no thing that I see that's, that is negative so far at all. It's actually been very positive.
So with, with the turnover that we've had and, and the vacancies and, and the natural startup that one has, is the budgeted amount for professional services enough to get a UDO done, a comprehensive plan, updated, which was a commitment that the town had back in 2016? The downtown code perhaps updated more quickly, given that's our economic focus area, as well as the, the, some of the neighborhood ordinances? Is that ample enough? And you'll say, I'm too new to, to understand that, but we're in this situation where I think what you're hearing from the board is we don't, the runways, we're at the end of the runway in terms of getting some of these things done. We, we want to, fair enough to say that, we want to complete, and, and so, maybe the better way to say it is just make the statement that would you, I think the board would have an appetite to adjust that, to make sure that we can get resources to augment, to get these things done, to protect the town. Because we view that as protecting the town more than anything, so.
Well, it, it, it appears to me to be a reasonable budget to move, move forward, but of course, you know, I have not worked exclusively with them yet, but it, it does appear to be so, yes.
And I will add that we're keen, knowing how this document has to be created, the staff has to be fully, you know, vetted in, in everything it's doing. So regardless of if the amount of work and what could be done privately, it has to go hand-in-hand with, with our staff's abilities so that we're all on the same page and, and we understand from the get-go, we don't want to have to do this more than once. So we're being very deliberate, and, and the issues in timing are really staffing issues. They, they were never really budget issues. It was, how can we put appropriate staff that are, that are well-versed in what Waxaw's situation is, in, in the right spot to help this document move forward where we're comfortable with it bringing out to you and the public? And that's, that's going to take a necessary degree of, of getting everybody understanding what our current document is, what the, what the intention and direction is for both sides, and then bringing that forward with the consultant as the linchpin of productivity.
Go ahead.
So are you saying, if you had two staff experience right now, are you saying it will probably be another year?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to put it a year, no. I don't think that serves either. But we have to be able, with Jeff coming in, there's, there's, we've taken a big step in, in our process. This was always kind of tops on the list, to get a planning director in place that can then start to make the real decisions while I've just been kind of getting the administrative done. That's now in play, where we're able to then have that additional capacity, and, and he's going to have to really make the, the hard decisions on where the direction of these, these requirements, these regulations are going to go. And so we've got to feed him that information, we've got to get his people on the same page as well. And that's, again, just the second step into, into a process that we're going very deliberately. We don't want to move in any direction falsely for, for not the right reason. I think in the end, all of this will play out, and we'll be much more satisfied with the patience that we've had than, than any other reason why to, to, to make move.
So what you're saying then is you're pretty comfortable with what you have down here on paper? And you feel that this will be adequate enough for you to move forward with the goals that you have stated so, thus far, with your knowledge and being here just a short while?
Yes, I believe so.
Now, with what's on paper here, because you had more input in with this budget, are you comfortable in feeling that this will be adequate, or once we get the staffing members on board, that we can then move forward with the planning department and the goals that not only Jeff has described, but the needs of the town moving forward?
Absolutely, absolutely. And there are probably likely going to be some things where we're going to go ahead and, and amend text to the current UDO, just because we know time is, is not something we have to wait on the new one to, to fix all these things. So there's going to be kind of, as, as we start really getting the team functional beyond what we have just kind of patchwork together, start making real decisions, the kinds I think you're expecting, but we just haven't been able to bring forward. And I think that things are really going to come into, fall into place sooner rather than later on that regard. We have continued to bring changes to the new UDO, and, and that will kind of set us up for, for moving forward in a much more tangible way in terms of what's been delivered so far.
Okay. Having been on a planning board before, and then understanding the needs and concerns of some of the citizens who are in the town, who have been waiting for a substantial amount of time for us to move forward and make decisions and put forward our UDO, comprehensive plan, so that we have that out there as a working guideline for this town? I didn't really hear that that was a top priority or goal. I heard it mentioned, but I think it needs to be, I think, I can't speak for the board, a real priority for the citizens here moving forward, because they've been waiting, expecting, and we've been talking about this for some time. So if getting two experienced planners on board, along with a consultant that we have already that we are working with, is that going to be a top priority and goal moving forward so that we can get this done?
Well, one of my goals was to get us back up to full staffing level, and the answer to your question is absolutely, yes.
So I think the tag-on to what you said is, I think, and I think we alluded to it upfront, we view completing these things a, as high a priority as anything for the, for the future of the town. Fair enough?
Yeah, they've been broken for a long time, even prior to a staffing issue, which concerns me.
That is a top concern of ours right now, is getting that done, completed, something in place for this town moving forward.
And Matt, you hit upon a possible, you know, let me step back and say, thinking out of the box is great. You hit upon a possible stepping stone, whatever that list of, hey, these are the text amendments that are really, need to be addressed, and maybe we have a work session to talk about. We, we see these two or 22, I don't care what it is, items that need to be addressed and addressed quickly. We're going to bring them forward to policy-wise, we're going to bring them forward to the planning board, et cetera. If that's an acceptable or thought process and, and, you know, the deliberate approach, great. It's just, I, I think what you're hearing from everybody is a sense of urgency on this that, for our future in Waxaw. So I love the thought process of trying to think out of the box and bring some forward and stuff like that as, as stepping stones. That'd be, you know, whatever that, whatever you guys come up with, those things are, we're open to anything to move this ahead at this point. And money should not be, I won't speak, we obviously have to make, money's not the object here. Getting this to completion is, in the, in the manner that's in the, that you guys deem appropriate, but with the expediency that we need is, is what we're talking about here. Want to work with you and not sit here and say, where is it, where is, you know, that kind of thing. We want to work with you and, and schedule whatever we need to schedule to help give you the input, or whatever that may be.
Hiring a person?
Hire, you know, if you need more people temporarily, whatever, we just need to know.
And it was always kind of, staff was the critical, the capacity there was the critical issue. It was, it was never necessarily the, the funding side of it, and, and I think we certainly will be able to show now, as with, Jeff's a key piece to that puzzle, and we'll be able to show very quickly progress that you want to see.
Have you noticed he's still smiling? Okay, other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Matt, thanks for keeping the, the dike plugged with whatever tools that you've been using to plug that dike. We really, we do appreciate it, and we know you were doing multiple jobs there, so thank you.
And, and the staff, Max Shang and Madison have, have really done a fantastic job in that regard. We hired them knowing they weren't at the high level, knowing we would train them up and, and kind of have a great foundation, and then very quickly, all the people who were going to oversee them moved on, and that, that just couldn't be foreseen at the time of hiring.
Yeah, one thing I'll just add before you, you both leave, and Mayor Protem McMillan kind of alluded to it, as you look at things, you have an inexperienced staff, new hires, and you also have a very inexperienced planning board. And we probably are going to have to do some out-of-the-box thinking and training for them, just as, just as much as we will for, for staff. In the past, historically, we've educated through staff, we've educated the planning board, and with that newness, we're probably, that probably won't work as effectively. So if you need additional dollars allocated to train the planning board, please bring that forward as well.
Yeah, and training is, is being engaged.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's Wendy. Page eighteen. How's Wendy today?
I am here to answer any questions that you might have for me. Do my best.
Okay. You may want to go first. Second, third, fourth. So, yeah, as people are getting their thoughts together. One of the, I, I'll make kind of a comment. Kind of got the board in a, in a difficult spot with the market adjustment. Our interpretation of the, the HR policy is that back in 2016, we flipped to merit increases with, with a compensation and salary grade study to, to come forward and, and actually attack that in a, in a more of a policy way. Be curious, and you might not know this off the top of your head, what would it take to do that kind of study? What, what would the cost be to do that? Because there's ways to, I, I personally believe we should do it the right way, in the spirit and the intent of the, that the policy was intended. And it's, does not mean that the town is any less, and, and the board is any less focused on, on the people. It's just, let's make, let's do it in, like a lot of the other towns are doing, and actually implementing three-year plans on this and then addressing it on a regular basis every three years, et cetera. So be curious as to whether or not you've looked at what it would take to do the full salary and grade study? When, do we want to, how quickly we could move on that, that kind of stuff?
Actually, well, let's see, we implemented our, our last salary survey in 2015, so, and to do another one, I, I believe it would be around $12,000, and it would take at the least about four months. So it would be well past the fiscal year start. Our policy, it was more of a practice that we changed that back in 2015 to not use COLAs, but to go to merits. So that really wasn't anything that we changed in the language of our policy, it was just something that we all, that Warren implemented and the board decided to do, so.
But nonetheless, it was something that the board...
Board agreed on, yes.
The board completely agreed on.
Right.
That, that's the approach we wanted to use, and, and really focus on merit and, as you recall, and you and I've talked about it, it took forever to get a HR policy...
Yes.
Through, it took forever to get the salary and grade stuff done, and so it, it was done with an eye towards how do we maintain our competitiveness, knowing we're going to grow and continue to grow in a, in an environment that makes it tough to compete? We're competing with Charlotte, so.
And Matthews and, and any other surrounding municipality, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would just say that I totally agree that we need to do a salary survey on a, on a regular, you know, interval. After several years, we need to decide what that is. But the policy also allows for the town manager to make those suggestions, and I have suggested that to him, and that's kind of why we're here, so.
Who's up?
We've heard about some positions that...
We've heard about some positions that are currently open. Can you just give us just a rundown of all the positions that you're currently...
Advertising? Just the two senior planner positions at this time. We've, I believe we filled the rest. It took us a while, it's a very, very tight job market, but we did. Now, we just, we have it advertised, we've gone straight to the source, the American Planning Association. We get a lot of applications, but they're completely unrelated as far as experience, so we're just still looking. We've made a few adjustments that might help us bring some people in.
Okay, so the reason that you're not able, haven't been able to fill them so far is either lack of experience or just competition among other...
Absolutely, very, very tight job market.
So it's not necessarily based on, are we not paying enough for these positions? Or is there, is our benefits not, what would be?
Our benefits are very competitive. Our salaries are, for a long time, I think we were, well, for a few years, I think we were leading. I think it's come to the place where we may be lagging a bit, which is why, you know, all this has come up. I think if we were, one of the adjustments I just said that we made was to increase the salary range, and I think that would bring more people in, so I do think that affects it. I do think what we're offering affects who we, who would apply for it. It's very important to be competitive, as you know.
And I don't know how much we're able to ask about those that have left, but I, is there anything that you can tell us about all the positions?
You know, they were, they're varied. The reasons that people left are varied. It all did hit one department, and I understand that without going into personnel issues, I do think we may could have held on to some if we did have, we were more competitive. I think the, well, I won't say that. I'm being very careful not to step into personnel. But yeah, I do think that would have affected, and that might have held some back. But on the other hand, it's also an opportunity for us to revamp the whole department and get it, and bringing Jeff in, I'm absolutely thrilled that he is, Matt is right, he is a key component, so I think we're going to get that department built back up and see some things get done. I personally am not, I didn't like seeing it, but I'm personally not worried, knowing what I knew about that department and the way that it emptied, if that makes sense.
I'm trying to think how to phrase the question, so that's why, and because I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer it. So do you think now with the current salaries across the board, that we are at a more competitive level, or we are moving towards being at a more competitive level with the surrounding areas? And if we are not, then do you have suggestions that may help us in keeping the key people that we need in place?
Let's see how I can answer this. I do think that most of the department heads, a fair amount are new, newer, so I do think that we are, have been competitive to be able to get such high quality or, you know, highly experienced people in. I think that needs to move across the board with all employees in order to keep them in place.
Does that also include the benefits, be it medical or insurance? I mean, are we, with the medical especially, are we where we need to be? There's something in medical, I have to, I gotta find my notes. Is that something that needs to be looked at?
I think the benefits honestly are absolutely where they need to be. In the past three years, we've either lowered them or kept them the same, which is unheard of in this, you know, in the benefits world. So yes, we're very competitive. In fact, every year, we've tweaked it to have somewhat of an improvement without cost. This is, we had higher claims last year than normal, and that's why, you know, we saw the increase this year. But even that is lower than the average, so, if that helps answer that question.
But from an employee standpoint, they're very competitive.
Yes, sir.
I mean...
They are.
Some of the best.
And I hear employees say that all the time. I do know that sometimes you'll hear employees say, I have my, I have my child on my wife's insurance or whatever, and that's not because the program is better, it's because basically it's less of a premium, they're, they may be thinking in the short term instead of the coverage they'll have if they need it, and that's the only time that you will see that.
Do we speak about, or I have a note here, something about moving benefits to a fiscal year?
That has come up in the past, not by me, but it's never gone anywhere because I think the scheduling of, and the timing of that would not work well with the budgeting, getting it budgeted so you'd know what you were looking at. That's the, that's all I can offer on that, really.
I will just say this, we're unique, because I sit on the insurance pools, and probably ninety-five to ninety-seven percent, if not more, go through along to the budget cycle.
Yes.
Puts a burden on the league staff to get quotes out and stuff like that. And quite honestly, we're unique. It does say that regardless, we need to, probably you need to come back and explain to the board, how do we integrate the board into what is really a policy decision, the type of benefit coverage, because you're into, you're splitting it over fiscal years in all essence. The decision's been made, there's nothing, not that we would want to do anything, I'm not saying that, but the decision's been made, so that's fixed through April. That's what we've committed to contractually.
Right.
And so, and then we're making it midstream, so based upon whatever changes happen, so whether it switches to a budget cycle or remains the same, regardless, I would hope that you would, I think the board would welcome you to come back in the July-August timeframe and explain how the process is going to work so the board can make...
Okay.
...way in on the policy side of it. I think that's important and part of our responsibility.
Okay.
Is there anything that would, I mean, we have, we have fund balances, is there anything that would prevent us from starting a compensation and scale, pay scale and grade study now? In the ball rolling in this fiscal year?
I would defer that to the budget, the town manager and the finance director as far as what's available in the budget. I would think...
What I'm saying is, I think, given employees are our most valuable asset...
Okay.
I think the board would welcome the study to get going sooner rather than later, and we have unrestricted funds, if you will, if we wanted to allocate it to, through a budget amendment, to get the ball rolling.
Certainly start a salary survey. I'd like to see one done. I know that it won't be back in time for the new fiscal year, and I wouldn't want to...
Right.
You know, I wouldn't want to hurt employees in that way.
You wouldn't be, because we can still budget.
Right.
But we can implement accordingly.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all in agreement that we would like to see one done. I'd like to see them done every few years anyway.
And again, I get this, but I, and this is just a philosophical policy issue, as a town board, Commissioner Burns, then Stewart, you were on the board then, Commissioner Burrow was, we had a very, agreed upon, unanimous agreement on, on to move away from COLA and to merit, and to the point where I think over the last three years, it's been in the three and a half percent range budgeted. So if, it's a double whammy, if merit isn't handling it, then we need to know that as well. Because part of the reason we got into, the problem that we got into with the salaries not keeping pace is we addressed everything through a cost of living, and we didn't, we weren't keeping pace with the competitive nature of some of the roles as they changed. So it's on both sides of this, so...
And I do completely agree that we need to do one. I think it's, it helps to reset everything because you do get, you do, you get out of WAC as you move forward, and different positions come in and leave, but...
We're relatively on the low end at fifty percent. I mean, a lot of municipalities are at seventy-five percent of the personnel cost when they total it all up, representing seventy-five percent of the budget. So it's a great opportunity for us to get this and establish a good policy direction as to how we're going to take this forward and not, and do the complete work and decide how often we're going to do it as well.
And just to give employees a plug, they, I see how hard they work. You know, my office is right in the middle, and I hear it, I see it, they, every department is so dedicated, there's, anyone who isn't, has gone, has left by attrition, so it is, you have a lot of dedicated staff, and they work very hard, and we just want to, you know, they could easily go somewhere else that's paying more, so we want to value that.
I don't think anybody's questioned that at all, on the board, at all, so...
Good, thank you.
Other questions? See, it wasn't that bad.
It wasn't, I didn't say it was going to be bad. It must have been the look on my face. Thank you.
Thank you. Take a quick biological break, and then we'll kind of go into the next set of discussions. set of discussions. This is interesting. All right, you get to go to one first. You're doing a great job today. All right, we'll go ahead and get back, we'll get started again. I didn't mean to cut you off, Commissioner Westlake. You wanted to continue on a discussion of department.
Right, I just wanted, since we've been talking to all the other departments, I thought it might be appropriate just to talk about our own quickly. And especially, we've been talking about travel and training with the departments. And so I inquired with Greg Thursday that the staff has a travel policy, but the board does not, and as far as we know. So, didn't know if that.
What do you mean, we don't have a travel?
Well, they have a policy regarding, I'm assuming, distance, costs, things like that. And as far as I'm aware, we don't have a policy.
Our policy is we have everything arranged through staff.
So we're considered, we're under the staff?
Well, we have staff that handle all of our travels, so we conform to the town's policy.
Okay, so that, see, that was not made clear. So I just wanted to make sure that we are.
It's not in the HR policy because we're technically not employees, but the direction that was taken was to, Wendy, help me through this. In the past, before I got on the board, people had credit cards and stuff, or some people had credit cards. Because of some things that had happened, all credit cards were eliminated. All arrangements would be made according to town policy through staff. And then we went, flipped from actual meal allowance and turning in receipts to, I believe, a per diem. And then it is up to us to request a vehicle through, through the town and see if a vehicle's available. If a vehicle isn't available, we, we get the same mile, well, the IRS mileage rate, right? Do I have that? Correct? Okay.
Okay, so what I, I guess my point was, is as we're asking the, the other departments to be cognizant of travel and training, that the board does the same as well and, you know, consider how far we're traveling, you know, whether or not we need to be staying at hotels, whether or not we should be charging mileage instead of driving to town cars, things like that. Just making sure that we're just as cognizant as the other departments. That was my main point on that.
Could you please?
Yeah. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention is how, like, I wasn't even aware, we have certain memberships in different associations and things. So I just needed some clarification on, you know, are we supposed to be attending some of these meetings? Or is it something that just covers basically one member to go to an event? Things such as, we have Waxaw Business Association, Union County Chamber of Commerce, Rotary, Women in Municipal Government, things like that. I mean, I didn't even, wasn't even aware we were members of some of these things. So are we, should we be attending these? Are these beneficial for us to be members of? I mean, we've never discussed these things, so.
Do you want to go down each one of them?
Sure.
Okay, so COG. You and Mayor Protem McMillan are the representatives. Do you think it's valuable to be a part of the COG? Or, and then we'll go to Greg, because Greg gets staff access as well. So you got to put the whole picture together. I'm not trying to be difficult, but is there value there?
I think COG does have a value. Within the last year, COG has had some major transitions and turnovers and adjustments that they are making. Moving forward, I do believe that if they continue in a direction that they are going, that it can provide a benefit of some services to the town. Town manager and myself, we met with the new COG director who's in place right now, who is, appears to be moving towards making those changes that could be beneficial and helpful, and have people in place that can assist the town in various departments and areas. So to answer your question, yes.
Greg, do you want to add? I mean, you got staff or some resource?
Yeah, currently, we're utilizing the COG for extra planning services. And I think that flexibility is great and has been very useful moving through a transition period. There's other services that they provide as well, some of which the town has utilized in the past and others they have not. I think for a medium-sized locality, they have a suite of services that you can pick and choose from. As you get to be much, much larger, then that's a decision whether you've brought that expertise in-house. But we're absolutely in that medium size that can pick and choose which services are useful.
It's also our understanding, I think, with the COG director, that they are trying now to put area representatives in place and identify the needs of certain municipalities as to how they can better assist those individual municipalities.
I mean, I tend to completely agree with you. And we've used them for, did you do the last salary with the COG? Or was it the police salary? COG, yeah. And they did, they actually provided the true budgeting exercise to get the ball rolling there. And they are active, active, active in the regional transportation as well. They do a lot of work for CRTPO. Not that that's on us, but the linkage there becomes critical because they, they understand the planning part of it and can help as we get into transportation issues. League of Municipalities?
I wasn't questioning whether or not we should be part of that. I was saying, some of these I wasn't even aware we were members of and.
Waxaw Business Association?
Okay, so does anybody go to that? I mean, I'm not saying that's important, but I'm just wondering, does anybody?
Staff does. Kurt, I think, said he goes and perhaps Dina and.
Yeah, we actually try to rotate around and get some different staff members there. Kurt's the primary liaison, but Dina and other staff members actually kind of have a sign-up system to try to rotate people through that. And, and various members actually go and speak from time to time as well.
I was just curious, because it's under the board. So, I mean, is a board member supposed to attend every?
It's a choice.
The member, the membership would allow any member to attend that wanted to, but there's no requirement, so.
And then, I know we've attended chamber events. Rotary, I think, do you go to Rotary?
It's for Greg or myself to go to represent the town.
And then the Women in Municipal Government. So I don't know anything about that, but does anybody?
Well, you're a member.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Suggest you reach out to the league and find out about that then. I mean, I certainly don't know anything about it, so I can't, I can't articulate.
Mayor's association is through the league, school of government is just, that's how they bill.
And then there's, I just know that there'll be, there is some adjustment to the travel because there's some things listed that we, some of us aren't attending, which is, I know that we probably suggested those two melody to include in the budget, but that we're now no longer attending, so that'll be adjusted some.
Well, I think it's important, that's a great question, because I think it's important, what the recommended budget is, is that the big dollar amount is for the apportionment, or if you will, that we're going to set aside. It doesn't necessarily, these are the items in this one that went into the calculation, but it doesn't mean that that's necessarily the training that you're, you're going to go to.
Yeah. And, and I would, and if we're going to talk about training, I do like the idea, and I talked to Greg about this, and I think it was something that Kat or somebody mentioned the other day regarding the other departments, that some of the training, you know, if we could do something streamed here rather than us having to travel somewhere, would certainly save costs for us and would be some things to look into. And then the only other thing I saw on the budget was, you know, the workshop. I mean, the facilitator and the venue, perhaps we not char, or go somewhere where we have to pay for a facility and whether or not we feel we need to have a facilitator.
I mean.
Those are just things that I, stood out to me in our own department budget that we've never discussed, so.
I will, I'll put the facilitator question, I'll answer the facilitator question this way. As mayor, it's damn hard to facilitate a conversation across the multitudes and participate. And I think the cost of a facilitator is, is, is miniscule compared to, as long as you have an outcome that you're driving for, driving towards. Workshops by design are intended to get heated, deliberative, collaborative, all those things combined. And to have somebody that is good at that, I'm not making a value judgment as to the last one, but it just, one way or the other, but as good as that becomes, becomes very important. This town has gone through that discussion every year since, since 2014 as to whether or not you need a facilitator. And what I've, my experience has been, whether it's right or wrong, is that when you invest in a, a good facilitator, that the outcomes tend to be much, much, much better. That's just, that's how I look at it. So, stated another way, you get, you get what you, you pay for a lot of times with that. But part of that is on the collective we, what are the outcomes we want? And I, and I would suggest that maybe that's where we need to really spend our time to focus on. I, I facilitated up at the league for the last year and a half. It's a hell of a lot easier, pardon my language, to do it when you're facilitating a group that you don't report to than it is if you're a part of the group that you're, you know, on Tuesdays, I got to gavel you down. So, and then on Monday, I gavel you up. I, you know, it just, it gets a little bit, again, you get to the outcome. But I'll go with the flow on that one.
I think it's good to have an impartial and neutral party to handle the discussion, but one who's experienced and knowledgeable, you know, with what needs to be done. I think it's hard that if you are a part of the board or the group or involved in the situation to be able to be as objective sometimes as needed, or to move the discussion forward as needed. So a facilitator helps to do that.
Agreed.
Okay.
So the only other thing is, we're just waiting to, we're going to see the travel policy. And is everybody in agreement on, we need to be as cognizant of spending the night in hotels?
Do we have examples that we're not?
Okay.
Because, because, because.
Well, what, okay, so.
So if you're directing that towards me, I.
No, no, I'm not directing it towards you.
No, I'm just saying, I think in general.
I'm saying, what, we need to have, like, I don't know what the policy states. So do, when we're, does it say anything like, well, if you're only going to a meeting an hour away, should you be staying in a hotel?
Well, I think that also depends on what's going, yeah, that, what's going on. If the meeting is at three or four o'clock in the afternoon and it's going to last until nine and 10 o'clock at night that you're going to get out. I mean, it might be better for you to stay.
That's why I'm saying, how do we, what do we have a policy in?
I don't, I need to say, in the past three years, and then watching, you know, and looking at the budget all these years before, I don't think there's ever been a board that has taken advantage, well, maybe one time, has taken advantage of travel, hotels, spending. We are very frugal and follow the thing. I, I just have never seen it. If you have, then come forward with it.
Well, I think that we need to have a, a policy in place, a travel policy. So that's why I need to see that. I was under the impression we didn't have one, so.
So Wendy's going to provide that.
I can tell you, there are times I've gone up and back in the same day to Raleigh. And there are times, like, I wonder why I didn't get a hotel in Charlotte when it lasted until 11 o'clock. I mean, it, some of it gets down to a, a judgment call that everything we do is a public record. And so, you know, it's out there as to the judgments that we're making. But so, you'll get us the policy, you'll get us the policy that we have been abiding by and, or, and I assume that when anything we turn in, finance looks at it and makes sure that we're conforming to policy too. So I guess, you know, that, on that. The, the other thing, and just in terms, go ahead.
Are we finished? Are you finished? I'm looking at the line item that says legal fees, and that's what I'm assuming is going to be for what is, well, not assuming, but it does say for the board attorney. But I don't see anything that's in there that is speaking to advertisement, you know, how are we advertising? What is the cost for advertising? Where are we advertising for the town attorney? Are we putting money, you know, out for that, for the advertisement, for the attorney? How are we, how are we doing that?
Any job ad is going to be in HR's budget.
So that's going to be in HR that we're looking at that item. So, okay. I don't think I saw it there either, but let me go back and look.
What he's, what he's saying is that job postings, advertisements, that, that is all encompassing out of the HR department. Recruitment is your, it's out of that budget.
So it's out of your whole budget there, not alone?
That's the actual legal fees that are budgeted that we will expend next year, which gives the implication that we are going to do something, because we're well under that for this year.
So far.
Yep, so far.
Well, is there a salary then?
Outside counsel, in addition to the interim town attorney, would also come out of that line. So if you do have additional cost, then if, for instance, if there's a response needed to a court case and an outside counsel's retained for that, that would also go to that line.
So as a, for instance, just as an example, so when we have to handle lawsuits, the bridge or stuff like that, well, the town attorney may look at it, the interim town attorney may look at it. He, he will make an assertion of whether or not we need a certain level of specialty or expertise that we bring in to help adjudicate that. That's kind of what you're getting at.
Correct. And for instance, that's extremely timely, he's going to update the board at a future meeting. The, the town was named in a, an action to get a declaratory judgment to determine who's responsible to fix a stormwater device. The HOA of this particular development is the responsible party. However, the, the person who brought the action is trying to find out, A, if they can require the HOA to fix it, and then two, if they can't, is it the county or the town? So that type thing, because it's not going to be covered by league insurance, would be the town attorney first responding to that. And then if it actually ends up in court, you'd have to have an outside counsel at that point. But that one, that's an example of how that could occur.
Okay. Go ahead.
This election cost that's required by the county? What does that cover that we're paying for?
Well, when you ran for office, we had to cover your costs. Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
You covered my costs?
Just kidding. It's a, it's the, what the Board of Election requires of us, given that we're a municipality and we have voting.
They give a very detailed cost estimate down to volun, I mean, not the volunteers, but staffing, printing, mileage. It's very split out. And it's not to exceed, but it's their estimate for what it costs to operate the municipal election. So printing the ballot, there's a portion of that gets allocated to the town. And if you'd like a copy of that, we can provide it, but it's a very detailed estimate that the county puts together.
What?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Where are we? We haven't heard much from the left, my left-hand side, your right-hand side. Do you, where do you feel we are at this point? Do you care to offer anything at this point?
I think we have some policy decisions to make, and I think we need to go back and rework this document. I don't think it answers the questions for the public that need answering.
I think that there's, there's still a lot of work to be done on the 1920 budget. After hearing all of the different departments bring forward information.
Commissioner Westlake? You comfortable with where, I mean?
I, I like the plan that, we need to move forward here. Let's start talking.
Okay, well, why don't you start talking then? What do you?
Do you have, where are we? I don't, you're throwing me on the spot now. What are we?
Yeah, that's, see, that's what you pay for, went through the facilitator. Throw you on the spot.
I mean, we need to start talking about some of our goals and projects.
So, okay. So I think it's fa, safe to say that we probably need to articulate in, in the budget document, how our, we have a great start for a financial model. But I think what we've heard in the last three days, Tuesday, Thursday, and today, is what will, we need to be able to clearly articulate to the community what the budget will accomplish for the town. And so we started to hear some from a town infrastructure standpoint, what specific do we, lead do we want to accomplish? From a parking, from a walkability, do we want to, does this board want to say, we will spend X number of dollars or whatever on sidewalks? We still need to go through the five, five-year capital plan because that gets to sustainability. Do we want? Do we want to, from an economic and financial sustainability, do we want to invest in downtown infrastructure? The town property, are we gonna move this year? We, we need to get those things captured. We heard from Jeff and Matt, we are, as a, as a budget, and again, I think this is what people, we can help educate people in the community. You're gonna have a great planning department in place. Matt's gonna be able to get on with, with, with the engineering and transportation side of it. But because you have that staff, you're gonna complete for this town, a UDO, the ordinances, et cetera. And we need to, we need to remind people of that in our, in our document, that we're gonna, the reason you're paying for these resources is because they're going to accomplish these things, and they expect us to commit to it. There is a, we have to make some decisions on, on the, on the police side. Do you wanna invest? And how much? One of the things that I think requires the discussion, and maybe we need to, to come back to it, if I read it right, cause over the weekend, we got the final copy of the financial report, and when you compare the police budget to the actuals for 2018, that's a 45% increase. So, wow. What all are we accomplishing with that, that increase? We, we need to be able to explain that to the community. It's not, certainly after, with this being National Police Week, the last thing we are doing is questioning that, but, but in, in the course of the events of the past week, but a 45% increase, we gotta be able to explain that to the community, I, I think, with specificity. I think we, we need to see, this is just me talking from my list that I created, we need to see what the value of the WAA agreement is, and are we gonna invest in the Y, and need to be specific. The WAA agreement, as I understand it, really is a, is the type of thing that really covers the, the maintenance of those fields. That's a, that's a significant financial impact that we, we need to understand, because if we had to replace it, it is what it is. I also have things like, I, I personally would like to see the, how we're going to address the Public Works building, the Town Hall, Hall Building, and those things, and see those as line items in the budget document that we are going to address in some way, shape, or form. But that, that's the beginning of my list, and all I did was I started to write things down based upon the goals we talked about in August of last year and in, in January of this year of, of, you know, the goal areas that align to missions. So, what do you all think? Is that the right way to go? To help staff get this to a, to a level? What do people think?
I think so. And I think also, just looking at the economic development part with how are we moving forward and the information coming back for the Nivens Price Building? Corner Lot, as far as parking, I still have questions of, we're going to do something with that corner lot, we just haven't made the decision, but, and we may not make the decision this year or next year, but for, and it could be five years before something is actually done. So, what do we do with that lot when it isn't being used for events or it isn't being rented by one of the businesses for a special event? Do we let it sit there for ninety, over 90% of the time with a closed gate? I think that's a bad decision. I think it needs to be parking, and I've said this before, with the understanding that it's going to be developed in the future, but why not use it for parking? And I can understand the, the idea of, once you get people used to parking there and then you take it away, there's gonna be this hole, but that's communication. Need to make a decision on that. There is a parking issue downtown, and perhaps by the time we get to a decision, if we decide on retail there, the consultants have already said that was the best use, to build a building and then half of it parking. So, when we had our parking survey, they also said parking. So, we need to make some decisions there, even if they're for temporary use, instead of it just sitting there. And I don't see that, it's not a parking problem because it's only on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, we have a parking problem. So, let's, let's do something and make a decision to alleviate that for the next couple of years until a board makes a decision on a final use for that corner lot.
I just think that with each, with the departments, some which we've heard, engineering, planning, maintenance, HR, that there are specific needs that they've addressed or wants or wishes that would help with moving forward, be it a consultant, be it a building, be it, you know, surveys, whatever, that is not addressed in the budget items. So, I think that the budget needs to have some specis, specificity, well, you know, specificity. There you go. It needs that. And, I'm having trouble speaking this morning. It needs that with identified projects. We need to identify not just numbers or, you know, telephone expenses or copy expenses, but we need to identify what those departments' needs are moving forward with the projects outlined, specifically through things that we've already discussed or that we know that the town would like to see. They wanna know where their money is going. And we have an obligation to let them know that if they see streets are falling in or need to be repaved, how are we going to do that? If they see that sidewalks are needed, where is it in there that we're going to be planning to build those sidewalks? If parking is needed, how are we going to move forward with parking? If a UDO is needed, where is it outlined that, you know, we are moving forward with the UDO? If the Y is coming, where is it outlined and how much is it going to cost for the town to do that? I mean, we just need to have that information identified moving forward, not just through this year, but how are we going to accomplish that, accomplish that in the years to come? We have a town hall that we need to speak about and pay for. Is that gonna be accomplished just through renting or leasing again? Or are we going to be planning to build? Or how are we going to do that? I mean, just the number of items and how are we going to do that, or what is actually being, the money being used for, and identifying the needs of the town. So, I think it needs some more work.
Of course, it wouldn't be me if I didn't mention parks, so I am. It, it's concerning to me that we have a safety issue in our parks, and now we're finding out about that. So, I know part of it maybe was the hurricane damage, but as far as not, no. Okay. So, finding out now with the safety issues, after we've spent money to enhance, for instance, Town Creek Park, that was $150,000 of taxpayer dollars to put a picnic shelter and a playground when we had safety issues. That money, in my mind, should've gone, or we should've known about the safety issues and maybe made a better choice to fix the safety issues first in other, on other property or that one. You know, I'd like a list of all of the safety issues and what the cost would be to fix those issues.
Continuing with your parks, it is obviously an emphasis point for the community, desirable and emphasis point. We have to figure out if, how much we can afford, and I think that's, that's kinda what you're getting at in terms of some additional information and explanation. I, I look at 2018 actual and 2020 projected budget, and Parks and Rec goes up 27%, and we have a master plan that we have to start talking about, that we haven't even discussed what the operational impact of that, that is. And so, begs the question, how do we sustain it, given that our tax base has gone from 34 to 36 to 38 in a relatively short period of time? Albeit, one was revenue neutral, and albeit that the then-board took away the sanitation approach, and, and so that has had repercussions. But top of mind for me is, is the, are the growth projections over, one, a must-have public safety, and a, and one, a, we really wanna provide it, Parks and Rec master plan. And we, we don't really have a projection yet in terms of, or a thought process that we've discussed in terms of how do we sustain it. I was somewhat amused by what was posted out on social media and the survey that was taken over the weekend, because if I went and asked everybody, would you like a park? Would you like new roads? Or would you like a Public Works building? Sorry, Todd, you're gonna lose every time when the question is asked that way. Yet, what you do, to me, for us, is that building needs to get done and get done. We need to address it, because while that building worked fine when we had, we were rotating cars through the police department, we've, we've just added so much capacity that, and, and we need to address that as a board. That's sustainability for the town. Yes, sorry.
Just, I think we, we need a document that clearly spells things like that out for the public, that says, you know, this year, we're gonna spend X amount of money on parks, and here's what you're gonna get for it. We're gonna spend this much on our roads, and here's what we're gonna accomplish for you with that money. We don't have that right now, and right now, we have people, confused people who are sitting there, some think that we're sitting on $5.8 million pot of gold, others think we can just ask the bank to hand us a check, and they will. We're not telling them realistically and clearly and in a way that's understandable by everyone, this is what we have, here's what we're gonna do for you with it this year. Here's the goals, here's the objects, the projects, the whatever, that we're going to accomplish.
And continue with that and tying in, Wendy, your point, we're gonna accomplish this through the great staff we have. That's, that's the key linkage that isn't necessarily being made. We believe in the staff, now we just wanna show what we're going to accomplish with this, I think is what everybody's saying.
We're gonna show the public, those that we serve, exactly what we're going to accomplish and how we're going to do that by spelling it out so that they have a full understanding.
Okay, so, just kinda going down some of my major points. Obviously, transportation project, which I, it sounds like Matt's gonna bring a list forward, hopefully we can make that decision soon. As far as staff goes, um-
But, you also heard tying in the complexity of this, you heard what Mayor Pro Tem McMillan said, and that staff has raised additional needs. As a board, we're gonna have to address the fact that the PAO bill doesn't give us enough money to maintain and stay on top of what we need. And so, is it a half a million? Is it, is it three quarters of a million that we need to be doing every year? That's where we have to kinda figure that out. It's not driven by, it's driven, that's driven by need, and, and unfortunately, the PAO bill, or fortunately, cause it is income, it's driven by what it is. But if we need more, we're gonna have to allocate money to that in addition to projects. But in addition to on that, we should be capturing in this document the current projects that we have funded through state and federal dollars as well, so people are aware, just as a communication vehicle, not as a, that, and as a reminder more than anything. Cause the misperception that was put out there and is continually put out there is that there's nothing going on in transportation, and we gotta, we're sitting on a million dollars. And that's just not fair to Matt and his team and all the great work that they've done at all. Just, we need to clarify some of that, so.
Right, and he's bringing-
Sorry, I didn't mean to filibuster on your point.
And so, we're expecting a list and making that decision, so that, I think we made it pretty clear that we would like to see something started in roads projects. As far as the staff-
But that's my point. We've started, they've started a lot and have progressed, we haven't communicated it. So, we need to now show them how, the work that they've started is how it's coming to completion, as well as some new additional ones, that they're getting the bang for the buck.
And, and so, to your point on the staff, though, as, as you said, how important the staff is to complete, help complete these projects, I'm, after hearing Wendy, I'm okay with a staff increase with the stipulation of the study being done, and-
We're not, we're not deliberating here yet.
I know, I'm just going down my, my goal, my, my list here. And then Public Works, Public Services Building, I agree with you, it's, you know, it's not glamorous project for the town, obviously, but it's much needed. I mean, I'm saying that the, the citizens may not see it as like a something that's benefiting them, but we know that how important the services is for the town, and we need this building.
I think that's up to us and the message we communicate as to how important Public Works is to the overall operation of the town. I think we can make that as glamorous or unglamorous as we want. We're not gonna say that, you know, we're not gonna leave it up to time. I just think, I think all, it's upon us, and I'm belaboring the point, it's upon us to communicate it as, as effectively as possible.
Well, my point is, when you said about the survey, obviously, it's, it's, the people are, they're not seeing the importance of it, so.
Well, no, if you could ask, do you wanna park a road or a Public Works building?
Right.
It's, that's easy.
I agree with, again, on Town Hall, even, you know, discussing whether or not we could even use part of this building for offices. I agree on, I think it's more important that we focus on bringing up our current parks that are open up to the safety standards before talking about adding or opening or purchasing other land. We need to make sure the ones we have open are up to current standards. Again, Nivens Price Building, Corner Lot, and completing the master plan. I mean, I thought we were just talking about our overall goals that we felt were important at this point, and then diving in more detail.
Not personal goals, goals, town goals, kinda gets it.
I'm saying that we personally, each of us was listing what our goals were, what we saw as being goals.
Regarding Town Hall, one of the things that has come back from, from the chamber in the economic development community is a word of caution to us, if you take over a public building, you are taking away from economic development opportunity in the town of Waxahaw. So, and that came back Thursday, Friday, in terms of some interactions both groups have been having with, with people. So, to your point, maybe we need to pursue or stay or, or whatever, but let's be careful as a board, as we instruct the manager, how we go about doing that, cause that's real. We've taken product off the market. So, what's the best, did you have more?
No.
So, what's the best way to proceed?
Well, can we proceed at this point without getting the information or identified questions that we have, or if we have questions or things that we would like to see under those departments more identified in a more specific manner to have staff do that so that we can then move forward? Or do we need to specifically identify what we've heard or what we see as a need under engineering? I mean, I've heard Matt say that with a consultant and things, he can do this and X amount of dollars. I mean, but that's not identified here in the budget. So, Todd, we've heard him, he needs the maintenance building, or he needs places to staff his equipment, or, you know, certain things, but that's not identified here. So, are they going to identify that? Or do we need to identify based upon what we know is needs, need to be put into this budget? So, how is that going to work?
So, from a budget standpoint, my suggestion would be, we've been pretty consistent on what our goal areas are, broad as a town. Infrastructure, economic, and financial sustainability, safe community, quality of life, town organization, some of the financials- safe community, quality of life, town organization, some of the financial stuff. And, I'd be happy to pull that together, send it to all of you, so we can have one list to give, that we want to see addressed. I think what, I won't speak for Greg and, and his staff, what they'll come back with is, if you want to move money, half a million dollars to additional street paving, then they're going to come back and say, you're either taking that from the, the unrestricted fund, and you're going to reduce it down or whatever, or you're going to have to say no to something else. And we haven't had that discussion, so it's part, it's a two, it's a two-part process. That's why I said, we're not deciding now on, on any one particular thing, because these are all puts and takes that we have to see what the ramification is, quite honestly. So, does that seem like a reasonable way to start?
What exactly is it you're asking us to...
Here's, here's the outline of our, our goals, and here's, here's the things that we want to see costed out.
Okay.
Budgeted. These are what we think the priorities are. These are what we think we heard you were going to accomplish this year. They'll tell us, are they in there or not, or there may be new ones. You added parking. We've, we've had, we've heard some different things. We, we added to Jeff's goal to make his third week digestible. We're going to, we're going to add a goal to his, and, you know, all that stuff, all that.
So, we could put in all the questions that we want to see what the effect on the total budget would be.
Correct, because, because, because they can't do their work and just arbitrarily say it.
Okay.
And we're not sure, that, that's the problem I have with trying to do line item from this. We don't know the, the impact we have by saying, reduce that, reduce this, reduce anything like that.
Gotcha. That sounds fair to me.
Does that sound fair to everybody? If we give you a list back, Greg, does that offer a better clarity as to what we're needing a little bit more input on?
I think what we can give you is some response as to what the cost might be, or the fiscal impact might be, if it is known. There may be some of your questions that may not be known, but we can give you the information we have as far as what we know. For example, the town hall line, the lease there, we increased that with the assumption that we would stay in place at least another year, but that beyond that, we have not made any assumptions, but there was an escalation factor built into that line, because we know we're going to be in place for a year. Next year's budget would address whatever option might exist at that time, but there's built into this year, the assumption that there's a year addition at least, and that it would go up.
But, but with that, and again, it's a, it's more of a perspective than anything. For us to make puts and takes on some of these critical decisions, the thought process of where we're going to go with town hall, are we going to build a building, we're going to remodel something, we're going to do this, that, and the next thing, gets us to some of the future capital side of things that rotate down into the, the operating capital for the year. And so, that full picture is, is something that some, you might not have all the answers to yet, but we, we need to start building, because I think you raised a very good point in the budget. We're sitting here at, at fifty percent employee cost. We're pretty low. But to grow, but to maintain the pace that we're, we need to be on, that's probably going to grow faster than we imagine. What, what's sustainable in, for a town? And, and I think we're, we're bouncing between those two questions, but at least we can give you that list of things that kind of highlight where, the buckets that they go into. Yeah, and I did see on the, on the town hall, you see, you did increase that substantially, or maybe not substantially, but market, market rate. And then tomorrow night, we're going to have to have fun with Dina, she, as she's busyly writing notes there. But we're going to have to get underneath some of these questions about what is sustainable, because that's a, that's a, that's an interesting plan. That's the best way to describe it at this point until we get into a discussion. It's, it's got a lot of thought-provoking, is this the direction you want to take as a town, which has a financial impact? Okay, I, I will get this to all of you later this morning and, and just kind of clean it up. Greg, maybe you can help us, because this, I, I am totally, I mean this in the, in the most objective way possible. Even with one officer as recommended, forty-five percent increase in actual from 2018 to budget on the, on the public safety, and we see the police asking for more. What, what do you think is, is, what are the factors that are out there? What are you, what are you seeing? Why did you, what was your thought process to keep it at one, all that stuff? Because this is the one that is the most confusing to me, depending upon, you know, the different perspectives. Any additional insight would be helpful on that one as we move forward.
Sure. There, there are a variety of ways to look at police workload, number of officers used. The IACP certainly has some guidelines that they utilize, and whether you call it one per five-hundred or two per thousand, that is a guidepost, but as the chief indicated the other day, that, that's simply a starting point to then look at your community and look at the maturity of the community, the type of community that you live in, and the history of your community as far as how much commercial base you have. So, certainly, a gated community-type municipality does not need two officers per thousand. A, a community that has a large historically impoverished downtown area with high crime rates, it may be that you need three officers per thousand. So, those are, those are flexible sliding guide pole, guideposts, depending on the trend of crime in your community, the, the sense of safety in your community. Do people believe it's safe, or do they feel fear if they're out walking around at night? DOJ, Department of Justice, has some guidelines also that, that give a range for a number of officers per thousand. Another measure that we really haven't had a discussion about is unoccupied time, meaning time that's not spent on active patrol. So, how much time do you actually spend community policing versus engaged in just responding to calls? And there's kind of a sixty, forty rule there. If you're a community policing department, then that might be a, a measure that you would take a look at, but we're, we're not using that particular information here. We do know that as population increase, increases, we have to make efforts to move our staffing model forward. And, police departments and police chiefs have an obligation to try to make sure that they have the resources. So, I think the chief has, has voiced what he feels like he would like to see. It's, it's the board and the manager's recommendation that the numbers, you know, may be different than that. We had, every department that came in this year made requests that were not funded in the recommended budget, and they were very, very genuine about that, and felt like they, they needed things to help them accomplish their mission. But there's a limited finite resource, and the lines have to be drawn. And each, each of those department heads can tell you what, you know, if they had additional money, what could they do? And they're, they're all great things. But, in my opinion, I thought we could add one position in the police department, continue looking at that staffing model. And the chief and I have had this conversation, is, this is not a one-and-done. Next year, we're going to have the same conversation. Some year, you might need to add one, some year you might need to add two. You really don't want to get behind in being in a position of, hey, we need to add four or five officers to catch up. And so, you know, have we had a noticeable spike in severity of crime, in a, in a trend? We don't, we don't have that.
You don't have the data.
We don't have that. So, in, in lacking that data...
We don't have, we don't have the, the occurrence, or we don't have the data? I, I, I jumped to data, but I do...
Yeah, I, I think it's both.
Okay.
And, and kind of my question on that was, there was, there's a total of twenty-seven in the department, but sixteen are on, are patrol officers, right? So, I'm not quite understanding the difference between the sixteen and twenty-seven, all those different positions, and, you know, could some of those positions, if there's need for more patrol officers, shift some of those positions to? I don't know, but that's kind of what...
Probably the best to do is to bring chief back down to talk about it. I would not, it, it's a, it's, we have to be careful in terms of suggesting things, just like to any department, but probably the best thing is the next, I think we're on for next Monday? Is that right, Melody? Next Monday. Let's have chief come down and explain that as a follow-up question to make sure you put in.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay. That's, that's a fair, fair question to ask. I guess maybe a different way to get at, a, a different question, Greg, is, is, is philosophically, since we're sitting at forty-two percent versus thirty percent of the unrestricted fund, you could have come back and said, we, we want to grow more, and we're going to use the unrestricted to fund some of this. A lot of towns do that. You chose, you chose not to with all these needs. Can you help, help us understand what you saw there? Because you guys go through a lot of discussions, and so...
Sure, sure. So, remember, fund balance is a one-time shot, and best practice is that you can only spend fund balance for things that you're going to appropriate and not have to come back the next year and appropriate. So, you would not, for instance, add two or three positions and fund it from fund balance, because in a future year, it's gone. So, fund balance should be used for capital projects. It should be used for planning for capital projects. It should be those one-time shots that you make a decision that you, you want to reduce that, and, and not think that you're going to rely on that, because it will not be there. So, anything operational, we're not going to suggest, with the exception of project planning. So, if you're planning for a capital project, that's, that will, it'll be an operational cost, that the cost will be capitalized when the capital project ordinance gets adopted, and we do a reimbursement resolution, and we go through these steps. You can grab that cost for planning a park, planning a road, and, and roll it into the total cost of that project. But, when you're spending the money with the architect or the engineer, it's an operating cost. So, that, that does get to why we wouldn't fund positions out of fund balance. But, there will be growth, and there was growth this year, and you can kind of see the trend. There's going to be growth in the operational budget each year. So, adding positions each year is going to be a flexible moving target. Some years, you'll have less operational capital than you have this year. So, for instance, we might need fewer police cars, or we might need one less truck, or we might need, might, might need a server. So, all those type operational capital items are going to fluctuate over time. So, that gives you ability to find additional staff members as parks come online. And as we do analysis, so step, step process here, the board adopts master plan, you adopt some projects that come out of the master plan, some road projects that are CIP-driven, those do have operational costs. And part of the operational, or part of the cost capture of the CIP format is ongoing capital cost. I mean, ongoing debt service, A, but then ongoing operational costs. That's personnel. It could be electricity for a building. So, we have the format to do that as the board commits to those projects. But those are not reflected in this budget, because that, that particular project hadn't been adopted yet. So, if you have a road project, you're not going to have capital, or you're not going to have operational costs unless we're paying the light bill for a traffic signal. All of the things like that, for the most part, are on state roads. So, the enhancements that we're talking about, other than paving, don't really have ongoing operational cost on the roadside. On parks, you do have those. So, if you're adding additional acreage, if you're developing a different area, an area that's not been developed, so it's a phase two or a phase three, then that will have the mowing cost, the lighting cost, you know, whatever. And so, as those projects move forward into the approval pipeline, we'll develop those for you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? If not, I will...
One, one thing, when, when Dina comes forward, when we're talking about the parking on the corner lot, I just want to hear back to what would be reasons why we wouldn't be able to use, say, at least half of it, the parking, for parking when there's not events, and if she could just, or you bring that forward.
And, and so, though, just in that vein, perhaps we will have the economic development discussion first, because maybe we want to accelerate that along with the Nivens Price, which would get to a different, different solution. Again, what I think all of you are talking about is, is the complexity of this has, is such that we have to talk about it holistically, look at it that way. Tuesday at nine, Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
All right. So, I will, I will send out the, the goal areas with some items that we've discussed. If everybody can pull them, add theirs, questions to it as well, and we will commit to get this back to, to Greg by end of day tomorrow, before the meeting, because I know then some are going to the League Conference, others are going to League of Cities Conference and, and a number of things, so that way we can have it. And then we will recess until Tuesday, nine AM on May twenty-first. Right? Okay. Thanks, everybody.